Up next, we have roll call. Ms. Holly?
All councilors present, an acquorum has been declared.
Thank you so very much. Okay, the next item is the agenda approval. Yes, Counselor Gregel?
Yes, no changes, I'll make the motion to approve the agendas presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Please start voting. Thank you, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, up next, we have citizen comments. During this section, this is where we allow the citizens to come up to the podium and state your name and make your comments. We ask that if you, when you make comments, that you keep your comments below three minutes. If you are still talking past three minutes, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that time. Do we have any comment cards?
I do not have any tonight.
Okay, that being said, we'll move on to the next thing on the agenda, consent calendar eight.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, up next, we have under regular business, a presentation from an outside agency, Family Fun Skate Night. Please come up, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
I'm Anne Marie Peterson with the Alamosa County Prevention Coalition, and I'm also a public health nurse.
Can you try the other mic real quick, if you don't mind, see if that'll work?
Okay. All right, shoot, is that better?
A lot better.
Okay. I'm Anne Marie Peterson, I'm the facilitator for the Alamosa County Prevention Coalition, and I'm also a public health nurse with 25 years-plus experience of being an RN. And so, I just want to thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak tonight and share with you a little bit about the Prevention Coalition, that we're made up of various agencies, some local government, and organizations, and community members, and our goal is to decrease problem behaviors in our young people by decreasing risk factors and enhancing protective factors. And when you look at the charts that I handed you on that first page there of that handout, our data committee chose four priority factors, the availability of drugs, tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs, extreme economic deprivation, family history of problem behavior, and family management problems. And with our families, here in Alamosa County, our child abuse and neglect rate and our out-of-home placements is nearly four times what the state is per 1,000 children 18 and under, which is extremely high. So, our coalition has chosen to prioritize that for now while we're still assessing strategies and other things. So, we had a Family Fun Skate Night, this was our second one. Our first one was in March, and we had 321 attendees, and at the one that we just had here, December 7th, we had 639. So, we basically doubled, and we served over 800 packs of hot chocolate. We ran out of skates, but we had a great time. And having these family-centered events, you know, whether it's building public support for or actually hosting an event is an evidence-based strategy. And at this event, everything was free for the attendees. Admission was free, skate rental, ice time, the food, we had off-ice activities, and this couldn't have been done without support from the community. And Parks and Recreation was huge in this. So, I just wanted to thank the city for allowing us to do that. Alamosa School District partnered with us, F's Restaurant supplied the food and the manpower to man that, the Alamosa School District, the Boys and Girls Club, Hobby Town, SLV Health, and Five Star Riders. And I have to give a lot of credit to Jamie Dominguez. I have watched him just grow in the last two years that I've known him, and he does so much for our community, and he was a huge support for this activity. And we had, I had some financial support from Walmart, and I invited the manager of Walmart to come, so it looks like we'll be getting another grant from them. He was really excited to see so many people at this event. And Schultz Realty and the upstream people, which is another prevention group that I do some work with. And some of the upstream people came down from the University of Colorado, and they were amazed at our event. And Emma Gilchrist, the next day when that group met, she commented about how one young lady said, "Mom, this is the best night I've ever had in my life." And as I was going in and out of the building and cleaning up, or starting the cleanup process, I heard a lot of kids tell their parents, "This was a great night, I had a lot of fun." And with our off-ice activities, that gave a chance to build that bonding time with families and stuff. So, I can't say enough for the people that helped with the event, and I wanted to read off the names of the people at Parks and Rec who, we couldn't have done it without them. You know, Jess Jolly, Orina Sanchez, Errol Coleman, Alex King, Amanda Saxton, Jeanette Traheal, Robert Pickett, Clint Kessin, Corey Saxton, and Heinz Bergman. Really, this was a great event, and I'm just so thankful that the city supports this kind of stuff, because this is what it is for our kids. And as a nurse, I've been on the other end of the spectrum, dealing with people in the ER that are intoxicated or high, or even worse, detoxing newborn babies, and dealing with pediatric patients that have long-term health issues because their moms abused while they were pregnant. So, it's nice to be on the prevention side, and to realize too that prevention is a good investment, your return is phenomenal, and it's evidence-based, and we're using science now, we're not guessing at this anymore. So, thank you, and I'm very, very appreciative, and so are our kids. It was a great event.
Okay, thank you. I'll have council say a few things to you and ask any additional questions, okay? All right, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Counselor Veal.
Anne Marie, thank you so much for coming and sharing this with us. The fact that you had 600, did you say 39? 639 people? That is amazing, so congratulations on such a well-run event. I think people might be curious about how to get involved in the coalition, can you let us know how to do that?
Our coalition has a website called alamosacares.org. It's fairly new, it's not loaded with lots and lots of stuff yet, but we're getting there. You can also contact me through Alamosa County Public Health, and that phone number for the main desk is 589-6639. And we encourage community support, we would love to see that. We'd love to see parent involvement with this too, because this is our community, and this coalition is not Anne Marie's coalition, it's the community's coalition. And that's our goal, is to make this a better place for our kids, and I know lots of people are working on it, but this is just another part of it. This program was put in place by Governor Hickenlooper, and I believe 48 counties in the state are participating in this communities that care process, and it's evidence-based, and started by two probation officers that worked with juveniles. And it was way back when prevention science was new, so it's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Veal?
Thank you, Mayor. Anne Marie, again, congratulations on a spectacular event. I think as council, we had envisioned nights like this for this facility, so we're just thrilled that you could bring this to our community, and I wish you much success in the future. One quick question I have for you, did you charge anything for the families or kids to skate?
No, there was no charge. Because this is an economically-challenged area, that was our goal, was to make this absolutely free. Nobody had to pay anything, we did not ask for donations, nothing. It was, this was given from a lot of people's hearts, and a lot of people who want to see our kids to grow up to be happy and healthy, so...
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and our next, we decided today, our next skate night's March 15th, so everybody's welcome to attend, and we'll start planning that.
Counselor Hensley?
So, I also want to echo and thank you for everything you've done, and without a doubt, to have over 600 kids shows that this was something that's really needed. And again, it was my vision as well, when we started working on putting this together as far as the ice skating rink and all of that. Thank you so much for doing that. And one of the things is, when you mentioned where the food was coming from, right away I thought about Jamie, and I thought how much he's been doing every time I always hear. So, I thank you for actually pointing out and mentioning all the things he's done, because without a doubt, he has, almost every event there is, he's always behind it with the food side of it, so. But thank you very much, and I can't wait for March 15th, and I'll definitely reach out and see if there's something I can do to help too.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I also would like to say, congratulations on a successful night. That very next morning, I had to go speak to a group of young students at the Boys and Girls Club, and the thing that they thought was so cool about that Friday night, they pointed out, they said, "We went to this skate night last night, but only one of us was able to get in because it was so packed." And they were not upset that the others couldn't get in, it was just that it was so packed, but they enjoyed watching the person who really did get in, get an opportunity to skate. So, it was people from, and these students are from different parts of the San Luis Valley, so this facility and the things that you all are doing, and all of the community partners and the community stakeholders are touching the lives of kids in a positive way throughout the San Luis Valley, and I encourage you to continue to keep that up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's it? All right, thank you so much. All righty. Up next, we have business brought forward by the city staff, finance.
Thank you, Mayor. Judy is making her way up to review this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. This is the third budget amendment for 2018, I believe it'll be the last one for this year. I'll just go through the items, please stop me if you have any questions. We'll start with the general fund. We had a refund of expenditures from workman's compensation, and we had a couple of FOPOs on First Street that were not our fault, they were two vendors that we were working with, so they're going to repay us for the extra expense incurred there. The total there is $38,904. The artscape income was pretty substantial this year between the sale of a piece of art, and then we had several donations that went through the enterprise zone. The SID, I believe the way that it was set up, when the SID was set up, with the property sales, then whoever the seller's required to pay the amounts due. And so, we had, I think, four lots sold this year, we had two sold earlier in the year, which we already made an amendment for, and then we had two more lots sold later on, and that 21831 represents those sales. The Training Foundation is part of the law enforcement community, and our PD hosts a lot of training in the facility over there, so we provide a lot of the supplies necessary to do that, and then the Training Foundation reimburses most of it. We were successful, Andy was successful in getting a grant from the Department of Agriculture for weed mitigation to help offset the cost of trying to keep the weeds under control in the summertime. And then we did receive $10,000 for the sale of the fire truck to the Sanford Fire Department. I'll now go through the expenses for the general fund. We had a change in status for the city attorney this year, and he became eligible to be on our insurance plan, so that's the extra cost there. With the changes that we made in the city manager's office, we had an additional person come on the insurance coverage, and the hiring salary for the new position there was a little higher than we estimated when we did the budget last October. When Holly bought code supplements for the city clerk's office, they were considerably higher, almost double what she paid, has paid in the past, so we needed to bump her budget up a little bit. We had an additional premium for the liability coverage for the city, and that was covered from those refunds that we got from earlier on, from workman's comp. They're not exactly the same insurance, but they were offsetting in the same fund. The SID is where, when we get payments in advance for sales of lots, then I use those funds to pay against the loan, so that saves us on interest. The medical and dental insurance, that is, we just, that's just transferring from the operations side down into the support department. The Training Foundation is, or is the amount, you'll see it agrees with the amount that we receive from Training Foundation in the revenue side. The part-time salaries for the fire department, a lot of that is reimbursed by the Forest Service and the airport. Part, a lot of the expense incurred was for that fire, the Fort Garland fire, I call it, Spring Creek fire, and then the other part is, they, the firemen offer support for when the airplanes land at the airport, and they reimburse us for those hours. And then, Don wanted to transfer the $10,000 we got for selling the fire truck into his reserve fund to put towards the new fire truck that we buy in 2020, 2022. Council agreed to increase our payment to the veterinary service for the Humane, Valley Humane League, to help support a little bit of salary for the administrator who'd been working without any kind of pay. And then, we did have some additional enrollees in the insurance, and we always base the, the budget is based on what the information that we have, and a lot of times, people aren't on insurance because they're on their spouse's insurance, and then they decide to come on ours, and so we get that additional expense. The $32.50 for the Department of Ag for parks is just an offset to the revenue we received from the Department of Ag. Okay, are there any questions there, where we got it, or why we spent it?
Counselor Gregel?
I had a couple on the revenue.
Okay.
You keep on talking about the SID, which, which is...
It's that Street Improvement District?
The Carroll, the Carroll SID.
The Carroll Street Improvement District, uh-huh. I think you passed that in 15.
Oh, okay, thank you. Also, the fire truck, is that the ladder truck that we sold?
Yes.
And I know at one time, we were asking 25, and we ended up getting 10. I'm just so happy that the community, other communities are able to use equipment like this, and I'm glad that we went down on the price, because eventually, if there's something, a big fire or something here, that equipment will probably come back and help us in the future.
Hopefully, yeah.
So, I'm glad that the fire chief did that, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we'll go to the enterprise fund. The admin, well, basically, Mark was fortunate, and he was able to write a grant for recycling, and it was more of a, it's a rebate, technically it's a rebate rather than a grant, but to us, it was an additional $23,793 that we can use towards the, actually, we're going to use it to help purchase a dozer, which you'll see later on. Then we did get a dividend from workman's comp, and the way I split that up is based on the percentage, like, general fund has so much of the payroll, enterprise fund, and recreation fund, and based on those percentages, that's how I split the dividend up, so that part of it gets refunded to each fund. The sewer system improvements, in the past, all of the water and sewer lines that go into a new street construction like First Street, were just included in the street project, so it went into the general fund, which really isn't correct, it should have been split, because a lot of the expense, almost a quarter of a million dollars should have gone to the enterprise fund, because it was for water, sewer, and sanitary sewer improvements. And so, what we did is, we, Mark went through his street budget and pulled out all the things that should have gone to the enterprise fund, and that resulted in a little overage in the sanitary sewer line items, so we went ahead and did a budget amendment for that. And we did take it out of the fund balance, but there's enough savings in other line items in the enterprise fund that it doesn't really make a significant difference in the way that it'll end the end of the year. We moved $20,707 to the sanitation department to pay for the balance of the dozer, which they're going to use to move some of the green waste, and then the other, well, actually a lot of places in the city can use a dozer for different projects, for all the park work that we're doing, and so it'll be, and they were able, Mark again was, and Tim, I think, helped him find it, but they found a really good dozer with not a lot of hours on it, that they're going to be able to purchase. Any questions on the enterprise fund? Okay, and the conservation trust, this is just, this $3,000 for the trees that I've been chasing all year. I put it in conservation trust, because that's where I thought they were going to plant the trees, but as it turns out, you can't put other grant, they don't want there anybody messing with their money in the conservation trust, so I moved it to community rec, and that's where the trees were purchased. So, we'll move on to community rec. There again is the famous $3,000 tree grant, there's their workman's comp dividend. The general, that $39.66 from SLV Go is part of the Inspire Grant that SLV Go was able to give back to the rec fund to help Andy pay for some rec interns that they had this summer. And then, the $175,000 is money that was actually budgeted in '17, but we received it in '18, so that was part of the money for the ice rink, multipurpose building. On the expenses, every year, the friends at the library, they have their little bookstore over there, and they do some other fundraisers, but they usually give Saleah, and I'm saying that because it usually goes to her, she's very protective of this $5,000, and then she works along with them to buy things for the library that the library needs. And then, the salary season law is the offset of the Inspire Grant that we got, that Andy used for interns, and then there's the $3,000 for the trees, and then council approved an additional $48,481 for the increased cost of the HVAC that was budgeted at 76 and came in like $125. So, that is all there is for Parks and Rec. Is there any other questions?
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say, excellent job. I really appreciate the explanation of where new revenue came from, and kind of the way you've done this all year, so I really appreciate that. I'm excited about the tree money that you figured out, it sounds like it was a pain.
No, it wasn't, it's just my misunderstanding, so I moved it a couple times, but I think it's right now.
So, I just wanted to say, thank you and great job.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Council, Mayor.
Okay, all right, council, Counselor Gregel?
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion, we approve resolution number 182018.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
Good. Next, we have under city manager legal, an amendment of subdivision improvement agreement. Heather, you want to give us an overview?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that was approved in 2013, and given that, we want to make sure we cover some of the history of that, because I believe Counselor Gregel was the only sitting council member at that time. So, what is before council tonight is a request on behalf of Sage Apartments to extend the subdivision improvement agreement, also known as the SIA, by one year. From a historical perspective, when city council was taking consideration of the final plat in 2013 for the request in front of them, they placed the requirement for construction of Foster Avenue between First and Chico Streets, if the developer constructed any further development beyond the apartments that were going to be immediately built, or by December 31st, 2018. During that time, Sage Apartments communicated a preference not to have to construct Foster Avenue, but city council did vote unanimously on the conditions, and Sage Apartments signed that agreement, and with that knowledge, moved forward in the construction that they did in 2013. When you fast-forward to the spring of 2018, both of those triggers actually occurred, so there was a second construction that was begun, as well as that five-year trigger for the timeframe. So, both of those that council set in place within the original SIA were triggered. As part of that original SIA, there was an irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of $85,000 to secure the construction of the road, and the understanding is that if any, if the developer did not construct it within five years, or when the other trigger was triggered, the other item was triggered, that then the city would take that letter of credit and construct the road itself. And any difference in cost would either be refunded to the developer or collected if it happened to be more expensive than that $85,000. When we've been working with Sage Apartments, it is our impression, as is the developers, that they can most likely accomplish the construction of that street at a lower cost, which is why, from a staff perspective, we felt comfortable bringing this proposal to you at their request. It's not something that we want it to cost the developer a bunch of money or anything like that, and if there's an opportunity to help that cost be lower, we very much want to be a partner for that. Attached to your agenda item is the request from Sage Apartments to amend it for an extension of one year, so the staff felt that we are still getting the construction of the road, yet allowing the developer additional time to construct that. There are a few little nuances as well, it's, there's some details listed, one through six in your council communications, and some of those include that Sage Apartments will have a licensed engineer prepare a cost estimate, and based on that cost estimate, the amount will be increased, the letter of credit will be increased to match what that engineering cost estimate is. It also lays out that the city will issue the certificate of occupancy, so we no longer have to look at potentially withholding that because of the existing SIA, and that's not, we want the developer to be able to complete that project, move some residents in, and start making the best, highest use of that property. So, it does lay out that the city will issue the certificate of occupancy. It also lays out that the Sage Apartments will convey to the city an easement deed for the designated 100-year detention pond. It also acknowledges, the drainage is still a little bit up in the air in two regards. The first one is, the developer wanted to look at if surface or subsurface, which would be the most cost-effective, but yet meet city codes, and so in regards to that, whichever one meets city codes, we're okay with. But the other part related to stormwater is where that's going to go. If the subsurface is selected as needed from an engineering perspective, there's a question on, we have not renegotiated our agreement with the Hickory-Jackson Ditch, or if we would need to look at other alternatives for drainage. And so, this just recognizes that if there's additional cost as we figure out those items, that they would have to share their proportionate cost in relation to that. So, the Hickory-Jackson Ditch, we need to look at our agreement and try to renegotiate on that in regards to our stormwater, if we want to put more stormwater in there. Those discussions have not happened yet, and so what this is recognizing is, as this area is developing, if there's an additional cost either for that, or because we tie it into 10th Street and take it over a different way, that that development would pay its proportionate cost, as would any other development for that type of thing. The other item that's laid out is, when they are constructing Foster Avenue, as they approach the intersection of Chico Street, we will provide the materials, and it lays out the manhole, some of the lines, all of that kind of thing, that will help connect it, if it is subsurface drainage, into what would be the future constru- it if it is subsurface drainage into what would be the future construction of Foster Avenue. Um, and then I already talked about, based on that engineering design, the letter of credit would be increased, um, to better match what the actual cost we are expected to be. It's important for us, from a staff perspective, to note that we're fine constructing the street, Foster Avenue, um, should the, something not go well with the developer, it's something we've constructed other streets and, and we would just throw that into the arsenal. However, we wanted to be a good partner and allow them to potentially save some funds if they do it themselves, and so that's why we were supportive of this one-year extension. We are not supportive of any modifications that would shift any of the costs to our taxpayers, um, and we wanted to be straightforward, um, with that information. We're also aware that there's been a lot of conversations, um, that could create some confusion, um, and so we wanted to be very straightforward in that with our communication. One of them is that there is some misinterpretation of what the initial agreement required in regards to was it just paving or construction of the street and what does a construction of a street entail? And so the wording's directly from the contract, the agreement, I've placed it in your council communication and to paraphr, paraphrase, it means all improvements should be constructed based on the City of Alamosa standard construction specifications. The other area is there's been significant discussion on the stormwater and again, that's an area that as long as it's meeting code, we're, we're fine with surface or subsurface and, and willing to work with the developer on that. There has also been, um, a lot of discussion in regards to if there should be a delay on if this section should be done and, um, emphatically staff, it very much feels that it should be done now. And there's several reasons. The first one is when council approved the agreement in twenty thirteen, they did that without knowing if there was gonna be any other development. They did that knowing that this still may be, as the developer indicated at that point time, a road that's going to nowhere, so why pave that little section? Council still felt unanimously that it needed to be paved and so I, I feel that it's important that we're consistent with what council's direction was. And their direction was either in five years or at the construction of another complex and both of those, again, were triggered this year. The second reason we don't share the same opinion that it could maybe be delayed is we don't know when development's gonna happen further south. Development in Alamosa doesn't occur at the same rate as the Front Range, um, and so it could be five, ten years and who knows what's gonna be the situation? I know we have been discussing the SID, but there's a lot of plate, pieces that can move in there. It is dependent on us working with the county, it's dependent on property owner support. Um, we are going to be reaching out to the property owners and as we committed to counsel from that work session, to find out if there is support and, and to start working those pieces, but even if there is strong support, that's two to three years out. So that's another reason we do not recommend delay of the project. And finally, the reason we don't recommend a delay is there's not actually any reason not to construct this section right now. Um, people are driving on it, they will be accessing off of it for the complexes and from an engineering design perspective, everything else, once it's developed, will tie in fine. We are getting a design that will tie into future designs, so it doesn't hurt future development in any way and additionally, the co, cost of construction's only gonna go up. So, um, with those before you, I do know that the developer is in the audience and, and it is council's prerogative if you wanna invite them up for any questions or anything like that.
Thank you, Heather. So what we'll do is I see Mr. Martinez is out there in the audience. If you don't mind coming up to the podium, and what we'll do is allow Mr. Martinez to say, uh, what he needs to say and then we'll allow him to sit back down, uh, and then bring it back to council for discussion. There's no need for him to have to stand up here as we talk through this issue of that is okay. So, Mr. Martinez?
Hello.
Hello.
How are you guys?
Great, thank you.
Good. Excuse me if I'm a little nervous, I'm not used to talking in front of a, of a lot of people. Um, a lot of what Heather has said is correct. A little bit of background information, back when I signed that agreement with the city, uh, I think it's important to understand that we discussed the road period. That was it. We never talked about drainage, we never talked about, uh, detention ponds or anything for the road. My understanding was it was the road. That's the estimate that you guys have as an exhibit, that at the time was eighty-five thousand dollars. Okay? Also, at that time, I didn't have to have it engineered, uh, the site plan didn't have to be engineered. That was all new, obviously, to me now that I knew this was coming up. Now, and it's my mistake, I thought I had another year, with the exception of when I was going to build another apartment, I knew that that was gonna trigger it, but I thought I had until the end of nineteen. The date, apparently, the date I saw was, I think it was the letter of credit, 'cause I think it's up in nineteen and that's, that kinda, that, but that's my fault. I mean, that's, I'll take, take the blame for that. So, anyway, I decided to go ahead, uh, with another building. I knew the street was coming up, so I thought, well, I better get in and visit with, uh, Mark. Uh, and actually, what I wanted to do was see if I could extend the date another five years or do away with it completely because it still, to me, doesn't make any sense to spend the money to pave that road when I'm the only one that has any access off of it. Nobody else does. I, I own both sides, that, that's what their, uh, that was their reasoning for having me pave it was because now I own both sides of the road, which I, uh, maybe that's code, I don't know. But that didn't go anywhere. Mark said, no, we're not gonna support that, you know, I won't even take it. Okay. So, well, let's go ahead and, and, uh, at that time, I knew I was gonna have to build the road, so let's get started on it. So on about the sixteenth of July, um, Mark asked me to go to a meeting, uh, on the road. I just assumed it was a couple people, well, it ended up being, there was like seven people. So we came here, sit down, and they're going, they have all these maps laid out and they're talking about this grant they got for this, uh, park, I guess, uh, Azul Park. And he's laying out, uh, where they're gonna have the system and where the pipe's gonna be and, and all this other stuff. Uh, and in our previous meeting, he had mentioned something about the Hickory Jackson ditch, simply because I'm the president of that ditch company and that we needed to have a conversation sometime and that was fine. He didn't say about what. So, anyway, we're sitting there and, and we're looking at all these, uh, engineered drawings and, uh, I, I really don't understand why I'm even there. Well, then he said, well, I said, Mark, I don't understand what, I mean, I don't, I don't know what we're getting at. What are you, what are you trying to say? And he said, well, you have to build a drain in that road, subsurface drain. And I said, no, that's, I didn't sign up for that, not five years ago. I did agree to build the road, but I didn't agree to build a subsurface drain. And he said, well, that's too bad. You'd had five years to build the road and now the city requirements have changed. And I said, man, that's, that's not right. That, you know, that's, uh, I don't even know what that's gonna entail and how long is it gonna take, you know, 'cause that adds a lot of, uh, time to any project. So, uh, there was a few other guys there, so they're trying to figure out. In my mind, I'm thinking, okay, I'm in bad shape. I've got to the end of the year to do this, uh, or I'm in default on this SIA. Well, if I'm in default of the SIA, they can withhold my occupancy permit, which they told me they would do. Uh, so I'm thinking, well, hell, I've got this building going up, sixteen units, and that's all I need is to not get an occupancy permit. So I'm thinking, okay, what's it gonna cost? So they do some figures back and forth, uh, they're thinking probably forty, fifty thousand dollars and I'm like, oh. I mean, that almost doubles the project because from, from, uh, two thousand thirteen at the eighty-five thousand, let's assume it went up fifteen thousand, so we're at a hundred, just on time. And then you add another fifty on top of that, all of a sudden, I'm at a hundred and fifty and that hundred and fifty may not be enough. Who knows where that is gonna end? So there was some discussion about me not being the only one using the drain because some of the water in that drain is gonna be off of First Street. Some of it's probably gonna be off Chico, uh, that intersection, um, and then the other side of First Street also. So then it was thought, well, you, you know, that's right. I'm not gonna be the only one, the sole user. So, um, I left with the understanding that the city was gonna pay for the drain part of it. I would design it so that it would work, the city would pay for the, the underground subsurface part, which to me didn't make any difference because I'm still building the road to, if they're gonna pay for the, the labor and the material to put the, the pipe underground, that doesn't really make any difference to me. So actually, the next day, I hired, uh, Martin Reynolds at the city's, uh, they didn't request, but they said, hey, he's already been doing some work out there, it would make sense, he has elevations and da, 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 da. So I do that. So, of course, he's weeks out, gotta get it done. Within that time frame, uh, I get my building permit and on there's an extra eight thousand dollars for some water assessment fees that were taken, that were never charged five years ago. Well, as a condition of my permit, I either pay for them or I don't get a permit. That didn't set well with me either, so obviously, I'm already irritated and then I, you know, I go from something that I thought I had under control to we just keep adding dollars and adding dollars and as you guys know, I, you need to set a budget on stuff when you're trying to build it to try to, you know, you try to stay within budget to make it work. That, that's just the way it's done. So anyway, uh, we have another meeting, we're getting ready to start construction. Okay, I, I have, uh, Absmire, um, Cooks, um, asphalt constructors, uh, they're all ready to, to go. This is in about September. So I took, I was having another meeting with, with Mark, so I had Brett Rodman from Absmire Construction go with me because, uh, that way, there's no confusion on what's, you know, what we're doing. Well, it, it, at that meeting, I'm informed that the city isn't gonna pay for, it was said they would pay for materials only. Okay, no labor. Well, I said, well, why would I, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. I'll put it in, but it shouldn't be at my expense 'cause I can't use it. I mean, there, if I put it in the ground, they're gonna cap it off because there's nowhere to go with it. There's no end use. And I still have to have a, a detention pond to handle the water in the meantime, so I have to actually do both. So I'm thinking, well, that, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't make sense to, to put it in there and cap it off, but not at my expense. Now, if the city wants to pay to put it in and cap it off, while I'm building the road, it doesn't matter until it gets developed and they can put it in the ditch or wherever they're gonna go with it. But I'm informed that, they said, well, he, uh, Mark asked Brett, how much is, how much is the labor? And Brett said, I don't know. He said, I, I don't have the plans in front of me, so he said, I can't give you that figure. And he said, well, get me a figure, I'm not committing to it, but get me that figure and we'll go from there. So then, uh, I think it was on the fourteenth, that meeting was on the thirteenth, on the fourteenth, uh, I see where there's, they're asking Martin Reynolds to put in the notes on the plans, um, that the city will not pay for any materials or labor on the project. So I guess that means it's me. Well, that, that wasn't my understanding at all. I was under the impression they were gonna do that because I can't use it. So, I asked Martin, he was actually scheduled to go and stake it out so we could start the construction that following, I think it was a week from then. So I asked him not to do that, um, simply because of the confusion that was happening with the project. I could see at that point, um, we were gonna be in trouble if, 'cause we weren't on the same page. And you can't start that size of project with nobody knowing what, you know, where we're at or what we're doing for sure. At that time, I hired, uh, Steve, um, because of the confusion and, and I was getting two different stories and I'd get told one thing and then later on, I'd get told another thing and, uh, the communication just wasn't there or I wasn't understanding it. So on about the nineteenth, I sent an email asking for the city, I said, I think it was to Mark, asking him to send me the ordinance or regulation that obligated me to install subsurface drainage. And that the, the plan that I had submitted be withdrawn. Because of those notes that they wanted to put on there, I didn't have time to review everything, uh, so I was asking that, that be withdrawn. And because of the fact that at this point, I still don't know if I'm responsible for the subsurface or, or, or not, because subsurface wouldn't even have been a thought. I mean, who would, why, there's nowhere to go with it out there, so why would I even have thought about doing that if I wasn't under the impression that I didn't have a So on the twenty-first, um, after Steve had me request that information, we got a, an email from Eric stating that subsurface was not required, that it was an option. That's not what I had been told. I'd already spent four thousand dollars to have this system designed, this road designed to accept that subsurface drain, um, only to find out that now it's not a requirement, it's an option. That's not the way it was, it was, I wasn't given that option. Let me just put it that way. So then we request a few meetings, uh, trying to get, uh, in touch on, to where we can all meet to see what, what we can do, um, because obviously, in my mind, uh, subsurface is gonna be a lot more expensive than a surface drainage system, uh, simply because there, you start buying pipe, inlets, more labor, uh, versus putting it in a, in a detention But like I said, that wasn't a choice, so I'm looking now to see if that is gonna be cheaper than, than the drain part of it. So I did, I mean, I, actually, I wasn't getting anywhere. So I did make some phone calls. I didn't know what else to do. I mean, when you get roadblocked every time you come up with an idea or, or try to have an idea or try to work something out, and at this point, there was nothing fair about it, that's when I started talking, I talked to Charlie. I mean, granted, he's my, my council member, um, Ty, you're the mayor. I mean, and I don't, I don't know what to do. I mean, I'm at a loss, but I know that this timeframe is, is running out. You know, I, I, I think that drainage system is a good idea. I'm not saying it's not a good idea, 'cause I think it is. I think we're better off with that than these big detention ponds laying around everywhere and, and, uh, you know, it, it's just better all the way around on that side of town. But I don't think it should be up to me to have to pay to put it in, you know, uh, if there was, and can't use it. If I could use it, it'd be different, but to pay it and cap it didn't make any sense. You know, the, just a couple other things, you know, there was, uh, some talk about, it's, it's in this, uh, in this agreement here, my Sage Apartment helping facilitate conversations with the Hickory Jackson ditch. Why is that even brought in? That should, that has no business in an agreement like this and the only reason it's brought up probably is because I'm the, the president. That's the way I'm taking it. I'm taking it as a, you know what, I think if we get I think if we get him to do this, and he's gonna need it, he's gonna be more likely to try to influence the Hickory Jackson ditch to get an agreement to put water in there. And one should have nothing to do with the other. I mean, I can't make that call on my own, anyway. That's still a board decision. And like I said, I think the plan's a good plan. I really do. But it, I mean, is it even ready to work yet? Is that, is that park plan done? It can't be, because you guys don't have anywhere to go with the water right now. I know that, you know? And I'm not trying to hold that up on anybody. But, there's a time and a place for everything, and right now isn't the time. And, and I don't even mind putting it in. I'll put it in. I have to build the road, anyway. The thing is, I know we have to build the road, but we need to build it right. And I know we were in a bad spot, a lot of miscommunication, honestly, a lot of hard feelings. Because I don't like being threatened. I don't like feeling like I'm, like I can't talk to you guys. To me, that's unreasonable. You know? I shouldn't feel like I can't talk to you, or I can't talk to Mark, or I can't talk to, hell, whoever I want to. You know, and in this instance, that's exactly the way I felt. And I don't think that's right. You know, I, I'm pretty easy to get along with, and I wanna do it right. And I know it's gonna cost money, I know it's not gonna be free, but... And I've gotta get this off my plate, because it's driving me crazy, to be honest with you. I mean, it's, I can't sleep. I mean, I think I get something planned, and then it doesn't work. And then we, we do a surface plan, and it gets shot down. Because we need to drain a little bit of the ground onto the street and use the curb as a carrier for about a hundred feet. Well, that's not, that's not code, or that's not accepted. Well, maybe not. But I'll bet you, if they brought some of those questions here, you guys would approve it. I mean, that's what you guys do. You, you know, setbacks. You guys make exceptions for those all the time. For porches, covered porch, I mean, whatever it is. That's, in my mind, that's the reason for having city council. And I wanna get it done, but I also need to try to keep the cost down as much as I can, as you guys can understand. I mean, there's, it just kinda goes, kinda goes on and on a little bit. And there again, honestly, did I wanna bring this? No. I mean, there's some things in there I don't like. But, if I don't agree to this, I don't get in front of council. So, there we go. Okay, yeah. You know, and it's unfortunate that I feel that way. But there again, I'm feeling like, if I don't agree to what Heather, Eric, Mark, I don't feel like I could, well, it's flat been said. I won't get in front of city council that way. Well, that's not right. And maybe they don't mean it that way, I don't know. I'm not here to bash anybody. I just don't like what's happened. We need to get it fixed. Now, on this particular agreement, there's some things that I can't get done, even on this agreement. We submitted a plan, I'm gonna say a week and a half ago, that I still don't have an answer whether it was approved or not. Well, until I have a plan, I don't know how much ground I'm gonna have to buy for that detention pond. So in order for me to give you guys a, what was it? Easement deed. Well, I can't do that, because I don't know how much ground I have to have, because I don't have an approved plan. I don't have the cost, estimated cost, to increase the letter of credit, because I don't have an approved plan. Let's see, what else was there? There's one other item that I can't, that I can't meet until I have an approved plan. You know, so, I mean, do I wanna extend it until next year? Absolutely. Can I meet these? I'm telling you right now, everything on there, probably not. And it's timeframe stuff. You know, until I have that plan, I can't continue on to meet this. Not saying that I won't. But, it's a timing issue at this point. And there again, I'll take some responsibility for it, because here we are in December. Okay? So we got fifteen days. So maybe that's running a little bit too tight. But, on the other hand, this delay is not all my fault. Regardless of what this says, it is not all my fault. You know?
When did construction on the apartment start?
What's that?
When did construction on the apartment start? The third building?
The third building on there, I'm gonna say, was in... We put an application in on the...
I think the...
So we put an application in on the sixth June.
And construction began before we received an application.
That's why I'm asking. When did the, when did you guys break ground on the building?
Honestly, I can't answer that for you. As far as date, I'm assuming in June sometime, Mike.
And when did you realize that the trigger had been, that you had set off the trigger for that?
Well, I knew the trigger was coming up because we, because I started construction. I knew when I was gonna start construction, that it was gonna be time, because I knew that was in that SIA.
But you thought you had till the end of nineteen?
I thought I had till the end of nineteen. And there again, it was right around the sixth. And, I mean, that's when we started moving dirt. Okay? Now, we did have a permit before it was time to do a first inspection on anything. So we did have a permit before the first inspection came up. And I know Hal did ask to get a foundation permit, and they preferred not to do that at that time. And I don't know why, did not wish to issue one. And so, it did delay some of the stuff. You know, obviously, we didn't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves because there again, we run the risk of not getting a permit. Okay? But, we had also, Hal is the one that pulls the permit, he had also been in contact with the city since he started on that. Now this, we drove by and saw they were doing this. Other than moving dirt, no. Which I don't need a permit to do that.
So, so what we're gonna do, Mr. Martinez? Because I'm quite sure council's gonna have a lot of discussion about this. We wanna allow you the opportunity to finish out your thoughts, because it could go in many directions once we start talking.
Okay.
So feel free to finish, and your comments. I wanna make sure that you have that fair opportunity, if that's okay.
Absolutely. And like I said, there's been a lot of miscommunication. Part of it's on me, but it's not all on me. Now, I understand we need to build the road, if that's what you guys see fit to do. But I wanna do it right, too. And I knew there was no way we were gonna get it started and half-done, and then argue about who's gonna pay for what. And, and we need to have a better plan than what we had. And part of that's gonna be communication with me and Mark, or me and Heather, or me and whoever. But we also need to, honestly, we need to try to work better together. Because, I'm not saying I was happy about the way I've been treated, you know? And maybe it showed, and maybe they took offense to it. In a way, I don't blame them. Ultimately, my wish would be, we get this SIA approved till the end of December. If we need to have a work session with you guys in the city, I'd be more than happy to sit down with everybody for a couple hours, brainstorm on how this is gonna go, and, and let's get a plan together and get ready to move forward next year. Like I said, I need to get this off my plate. But I also know if I don't get this agreement, they're going to, I'm gonna forfeit that eighty-five thousand dollars. And then if they go ahead and build the road, whatever that difference is, which is gonna be probably more than what I can do it for, I'm gonna be responsible for that, which is, obviously, I don't wanna do that. And there again, I'm not trying to not do it, but we need to have a better plan. And I still don't believe that subsurface thing. I don't mind putting it in. I really don't. If the city wants to pay for the materials and the labor. And I already have the design for it. It's already designed, so that would save me having to redesign everything again, too. And then, in the future, you guys hook up whenever you get your, the rest of that done, and we go from there. So I, I mean, I'm open to, to anything, you know? But, main thing being, getting this SIE extended for at least until 2019. And there again, some of the requirements, even in this extension, are gonna be, I'm not gonna say impossible, but they're gonna be hard to get if I don't have that plan approved, you know, real shortly. And then it's Christmas, and, but, anyway. I appreciate your guys' time. If you have any questions, or at any time, you guys wanna come visit with me, you probably know where to find me. I'll make time, and as much time as we need to explain anything.
Thank you so, thank you so very much, Mr. Martinez.
I got a question before he leaves.
Okay, go ahead. Make your, have your question.
For clarity, because that was, that was a lot. And I just wanna understand, this agreement is, you're okay with this agreement moving forward the way it is?
The agreement that...
The SIA. The SIA you brought tonight is what, just for clarity, is what I want. If they pay for, if the city pays for materials?
No, I'm not okay with the SIA, simply because of some of the stuff there that's unattainable. And some of the language that's in there also. But there again, Mike, I couldn't get up here to speak to you unless I agreed to this SIA. Okay? And so, I really didn't have much, much choice. And I'm not saying it's all wrong, but there is some, some wrong in it, you know? There again, like any story, you need to listen to both sides. You know, you guys know that.
Mr. Martinez, let me just make sure that we're all on the, understanding what the issue is before council, because I don't quite understand your answer. So, council has in its packet, the letter or the email from Mr. Attencio to me, saying Jeff will agree to execute the latest version of the amendment to the SIA. Please consider this Jeff's request to be placed on the agenda for council's consideration of accepting the attached agreement. So, are you saying that, that you're not accepting that attached agreement?
Could I answer? So, Mr. Schweizo and I began negotiating this a couple months ago. We had, Jeff had submitted, this is, we're waiting on the third plan to be approved by the city. So the first plan Jeff told you about, he removed it when he found out he didn't have to put in a subsurface system. He submitted a second plan. And Eric and I were negotiating this agreement that specifically says the letter of credit is going to be based on approval of that plan. That was rejected. We submitted a third plan. And when I discussed it with Eric and I sent the email, I told him, we expect that plan to be approved soon, so that we can meet the requirement of getting the cost estimate. Okay? So we, when I sent that email, and when we're scheduled to appear before you, we fully expected that third plan to have been approved by now or sooner. Without it, okay, we're the eighteenth. We've got five business days left this year. We don't have a plan. We can't get an estimate. Without an estimate, we can't get a letter of credit. And without approval of the plan, we can't submit the easement. All of those are required on the thirty-first. Okay? So, those provisions, we cannot agree to, because we will fail. We will breach this agreement next week, because we don't have an approved plan. So, those provisions, we cannot. The other provisions, as, as we stated, as Jeff stated, we were told very clearly, you submit this or nothing else. No other alternatives. So we submitted this. Jeff agreed to comply with it, but we're telling you now, we're unable to. It's just that simple. We're not unwilling to. We are unable to, because the plan hasn't been approved, and that triggers those three requirements due by the end of the year. So at the very least, this agreement needs to be modified to extend those end-of-the-year deadlines, because they're impossible to meet.
Eric?
No, I, so I have some, I have some comments for council on that. But, just to make sure that that's the issue, then. I mean, one of the, we can talk with council, or council can ask me about this, but one of the alternatives suggested for council in the communication is to adjust the length of time for completion as set forth in that amended SIA. So I don't think that's an issue. Mr. Martinez was talking about a whole bunch of other issues, and that's why I asked to clarify that question. So, I think that, that issue of, when, when is the, when are the estimates due, and the increase to the letter of credit due, is a fairly easy issue for council to address, as the question is posed tonight. Other issues, I don't think are posed for council's consideration tonight. If Mr. Martinez says, no, you know, I'm backing out, I don't like this amendment to the SIA. Well, then you've got a different issue that hasn't been noticed for the meeting tonight.
Well, clearly, Mr. Martinez doesn't like the agreement. He's expressed that, I think, so that everybody understands it. But he feels compelled to execute this agreement, because that's the only options he's been given.
And I think we can clarify some of these, some of the comments that have been made at some point, because there are some key differences of opinion on some of these matters. But, go ahead, sir.
But, yeah, the main thing being...
Well, and again, we were not allowed the opportunity to present any other alternatives to you. If you would like to do that, we are more than happy to sit and visit. This is what Jeff has been suggesting, maybe we have a workshop. We get everybody sitting down at the same place and discuss what the future holds, okay? I, I'm concerned, I read on the front page of the paper that this part, where the pond, the detention pond, where this system was going to be delivering the stormwater, can't handle that amount of water. I mean, we've got an idea for a plan for subsurface drainage that isn't designed yet. We don't know if it's going to work. And admittedly, the city needs to negotiate some agreements and obtain approvals and authority to dump stormwater into a ditch, and ultimately, into the river. And if anybody's been following what's going on up in Fountain Creek, we know that's not an easy task. But in the meantime, we need a CO. We've got someone who's willing to pave the road. If there's alternatives you'd like to discuss, we're more than willing. If you're not allowing an alternative, and that's all we have in order to get a CO, then obviously, these dates need to be changed.
Okay. So what we're gonna do, because the matter before us is about the extension and allowing for a CO within a certain time period, if I'm not mistaken, Eric and Heather. So, so that they won't have to stand up here as we go back and forth. Is it okay for me to allow them to have a seat, and then let council bring up their concerns?
Sure, yep.
Is that okay? All right. Thank you. And Councilor Brawers, you're gonna be first, because you've been patiently waiting, and I appreciate that. Go ahead.
Well, I'm confused, I'm, for clarification. Is it a requirement to have a subsurface drain?
Mayor, is it possible? Because there is a lot of information provided, and some of it, we're not in agreement on, and it might impact what your questions are. Is it possible for me to provide a little bit more information related to that? Or do you wanna jump into questions?
No, what I would probably prefer is you and Eric to address the issues that Mr. Martinez brought up, so we can all be on the same page and understand exactly what's been going on from all parties. And then that way, I believe council can have their questions directed to you all, and then you all can address those.
It might eliminate some of the questions, but maybe not all of them. And so, part of what I wanna offer is, I think... And so, part of what I wanna offer is, I think this has been a troubling project from day one, to be honest, from both the city and, and for Jeff as well. I think there's been misunderstandings. I can remember conversations that I was part of in twenty thirteen and fourteen with previous public works directors, where it was clear that Mr. Martinez was very much under the impression that it was just paving the road, and we were having to clarify, "No, you need to get it engineered. You would need to bring potentially fill-in from an elevation perspective", those types of things. And so, I think it's unfortunate that there has been this longstanding misunderstanding related to what it means to construct a road. I, I was hoping to be able to avoid some of this, because I was taking at face value the request from, um, Mr. Martinez to just be requesting a one-year extension. I did not wanna necessarily get into some of the details or the differences of opinion, because I felt it could be just a much more positive project than that. In regards to timeframes and, and being, and, and the phrasing and, and some of those types of things, we've, the triggers were clear. It was in the document in regards to five years and if the construction occurred. When someone is doing a construction project, they have to line up the funding for it. They have to line up the design of it. They have to line up the construction personnel. There's a lot of work that goes in advance into doing a construction of an apartment complex. At that same time, knowing that that is a trigger way back when those efforts are going into that project, should've been put into, "Okay, this is going to trigger the construction of Foster. I probably need to go figure out what that's gonna look like, talk to the city, and start that process." Unfortunately, that didn't happen. The, the construction of the apartment was enough to where we could've done a stop-work order, but we didn't. Um, and that's when we started talking as well about when is the construction of the street going to happen. We were told verbally that it would happen, so we went ahead and issued the building permits. Um, and then that's when we, the discussion on do we withhold the CO or not? We went into all the discussions of, "We don't wanna hurt the construction. We don't wanna hurt the developer", but at the same time, if we issue the CO, then we have no teeth, which is then what the agreement was that was brought before council. In regards to the ditch and, and those types of issues, it was actually put in front of me in regards to, "We need to be careful with how we negotiate with this developer, because they can control the rights to the ditch that we are going to wanna negotiate on." We hadn't even entertained the possibility that these two things would be that much related from a negotiation perspective. But it was something that was brought to us that way, that we may wanna be nicer when we're talking about the development of Foster because of the future discussions we were gonna need to have from a ditch perspective, which was not appreciated as well. It's also unfortunate that there has been confusion. There has been one instance, and I wanna make sure we are very clear with this, in that staff did say one thing, and we committed to something, and then we changed that. But when that was brought to my attention, we corrected it, and we are then still fulfilling what that statement was on what we would do. And that was providing the materials for a sub-drainage system at that intersection of Chico. There is misunderstanding from a city perspective that we never agreed to pay for the infrastructure for the remaining part of the roads. And again, this is a thing I wanted to avoid. Our, our interactions sometimes can be somewhat confusing, and it's actually not just a recent occurrence. We don't always have control when we're interacting with customers on how they're gonna act and how things can come out of that. We try to hold ourselves to a high standard. We don't always meet that standard, and we look at that from an improvement perspective. But we also sometimes, if we have repeated types of interactions, we try to figure out a way of how can we better insulate that or make that a more productive interaction. And so, for Mr. Martinez, probably about five years ago, something that we started using is that we do not meet with him without another staff person there. Because a lot of times, following those meetings, there's just a different impression of what happened or was said in those meetings. And so, we have consistently had additional people as part of those dating back to when we had previous, um, public works directors, because there always seemed to be a different opinion on what was said or not said in some of those, some of those meetings. And so, when we talk about the delay of plans and, and those types of things, the city attorneys pointed out, the very simple solution is to extend the deadline from December thirty-first to January thirty-first for them to get those cost estimates, the plans, the designs, and those types of things. A detail is, one of the plans that was submitted, and this is why sometimes there's a delay, one of the plans that was submitted was putting a majority of the, the stormwater onto the street. I'm not sure why someone would turn in a plan that would put stormwater directly onto the street, and that's not something we would normally see. But unfortunately, that took time to be drafted, submitted, and for staff to review and provide an expected feedback of that would not meet code, because we can't have standing water on the streets from a stormwater perspective. So, it's unfortunate. The last thing I wanna address is in regards to what we were gonna bring before council or not. We have always been clear that if Jeff wanted to approach city council in the public portion of an agenda to request something, he could do that. But as the city manager, I was not going to put on the agenda something that was not consistent with a unanimous vote from city council in twenty thirteen, unless it was something that was gonna be more consistent, which we felt an extension of one year for him to construct the street would still be consistent with that. But shifting any of that to the taxpayers was not something that I, with the prerogative as a city manager, was going to put on the city council agenda. But at any time, you all are aware, on the agenda is the public comment. If he wanted to come and request that something like that be brought up, that that was his option. But that a formal recommendation from staff or anything else was not gonna be brought forward for council. And I think it's important that that is clarified, because it can come off sounding a little different otherwise. And so, um, I apologize. It, it was something that we felt, if this was the request and, and that that would be honored, that, that we could keep this presentation very positive and, and to the point, and not something that I'm comfortable having this kind of discussion, to be honest. I, I feel like we're hurting relationships.
Okay, Eric, is there anything else you need to say, and then David, then you, Mike, okay? 'Cause he's been waiting for a while.
The only thing I would say is that, uh, Councilor Broyles' question didn't get answered. The, the answer is that no, there is no requirement...
Can you repeat the question, please?
The, the question was, "Is a subsurface drain system required?", and the answer is no. A drain system that works is required. And I think, just as, as the plans have been generated and reviewed, it may be true that the only one that works is a subsystem, subsurface system, but it's not, there's no requirement that it be a subsurface system if, if another one will work.
Well, because I think, I think the solution's pretty simple. If the city is requiring a subsurface system, and that was not put in the original SIA, why can't the city then pay for the materials?
The city is not requiring a subsurface system.
Okay, so he can put in a, a surface?
He could if he could make it work. The problem is, it does not appear that he can make it work.
So, he need, if he's gonna do a, if he's gonna do a surface one, then the detention pond and how it gets to the detention pond and how much it can hold and all of that, we were fine if he wanted to take a look at designing something that would meet the stormwater flows, and that's, it may not work. Now, your, your mention of if it was not included in the SIA, we're in disagreement on that. We've filled the original SIA, said you construct the road, and under the construction language, it talks about meeting all city specifications. And we very much had stormwater specifications when this agreement was signed.
Well, if, if, I guess my other question is, if the subsurface drainage system's gonna be plugged at each end, how can it be used?
We're not gonna plug it on each end. So, we are, so Mark, if you wanna come up and talk about it, we're the ones responsible for where it's gonna go, and we are gonna meet that requirement and, and have a design and an engineered look at it.
Okay, so the, the, the two options that have been reviewed by my office are, one, a surface drainage system for the Sage Apartments. Part of the problem was, there was never a site plan submitted for Sage Apartments, ever. So, the original two, two units didn't have a site plan, an engineered site plan. The, the current units that are in construction never had a site plan. The site plan is important, because it shows where the water sheds, so where the water is being pushed. And we now have an engineered site plan, and that illustrated that the water was being pushed to adjacent properties, to First Street, and to Foster. That all had to be handled with the submitted drainage plans. So, what happened is I approved a subsurface plan back in September. It's, I've, it's signed, it's stamped, it's approved. So, that's one plan that has been approved by the city. Then, uh, Mr. Martinez desired to investigate surface drainage, thinking that it was a cost savings that would be installed cheaper. When you look at trying to do the surface drainage system, it grew the detention bond, pond exponentially that is required. And, because you're changing from a standard that was back in, help me, two thousand and thirteen, to our current standards, because it's a change of design. And when you do that, the, the detention calculation in two thousand and thirteen is based on a ten-year storm. Our current calculation for this area is a hundred-year storm times two, because there's no way to drain the detention basin, so we have to rely on evaporation. So, it's not only just a hundred-year to, storm, you have to multiply it by two. Um, and this is a historical thing that's been applied out in this region of the city. This is not new to this development. This is how things are being applied. Montana Azul is, is the latest one that had to go through that criteria. Anyways, when, when the design was presented for the surface drainage, it didn't work. It didn't drain the intersection of First and Foster. And it, we can't have a, a development that's pushing water into a street and then not draining it. So, that's why that, and we didn't say you couldn't do that. We just pointed out the problems that had to be, uh, changed and had to be addressed before we could accept that design. So, we didn't insist on a subsurface drainage. We just said, "Here's the problems with this design." Then, a new set was just, um, sent in two weeks ago or something. I, I don't have the exact date. I didn't prepare for this presentation. I hope you understand that. And, uh, um, so, now we're right back to essentially the design that I approved back in September, a subsurface drainage design. One clarity, as we had two projects going here, Mr. Martinez's project and the Montana Azul project. At, at the point when the preliminary design for the Montana Azul drainage was done, Mr. Reynolds and I had some discussions, and we realized that the lift station that would be required for Montana Azul could function as a regional lift station. So, Martin very quickly, Mr. Reynolds very quickly, designed an extent to what we could pick up, what drainage we could pick up in the region. And at that point, he had determined that we could pick up Chico, and that's as far as he could stretch the drainage to that Montana Azul lift station. So, that's when I approached Mr. Martinez and said, and by the way, there wasn't seven, I don't believe, but there was Farin and, uh, Ray, and I believe Randy and myself, and maybe Harry. So, you're getting close to seven. Anyways, um, and it wasn't, and if it came across as trying to gang up, gang up on you, that was not the intent. The intent was to bring the city staff that was involved together with that discussion. Anyways, um, at that point, there was some back and forth. I was of the opinion that we should just, um, uh, require that the manhole and two inlets were installed on Chico, so that, I didn't wanna see the situation where we paved Foster, and then we dug up Foster again to install that, that material. And there was some back and forth discussion, and actually, Farin was the one that said, "Mark, we really should pay for that." And that's when the, the offer was made to buy the materials for a manhole and two inlets and connect those two together, and that would eventually then hook up to the Foster lift station when the rest of the system got put in. Then, on the plan that, um, I signed back in September, which is a subsurface drainage system for the, the, uh, Foster, to stretch of Foster from First to Chico. That plan, uh, Mr. Reynolds has designed so that it will drain First and Foster, so that intersection will drain, and then it will come subsurface, and there will be a, a, call it a temporary, but a pipe that will connect that drainage system over to the detention basin, based on the ten-year design that, um, is required by Sage in the Sage Development. And then, there's also a pipe that will stub out that in the future could be connected without tearing up any of the pavement that is being installed now and go on down Foster and drain into the envisioned and actually designed regional detention basin that will be installed for, as part of the Montana Azul project. So, there's, I can understand, um, some of the confusion, but not all of it, that, of, of what was previously said from Mr. Martinez. But, we have been consistent, and, and at one point, I have to admit, at one point, I was rather... At one point, I pulled away from funding the manhole and the two inlets, and we put that back in. I think Heather and I had a discussion, and it was off the table for maybe a day or two before we corrected that, put it back on the table. So, um, uh, I, I, I think I've answered all your questions. Heather, is there anything else I missed?
Uh, this would be for Councilor Broyles, if, if he feels his question's been answered.
I understand there's been give and take there, you know, and I've just wondered if, you know, the city could give a little bit of, uh, consideration to the developer and help pay for some of that subsurface, 'cause I hear, why don't you explain the subsurface a bit, or so?
I, I have a, I have a, okay. I can't make the rules. You guys make the rules. So, I, I can only follow code, and I can only follow SIAs. And there, there, the developers have to pay for their drainage system. That's pretty clear. That's pretty clear direction that I, that I see historically from this body, that the developers have to pay for their drainage system. So, mixing the desire of the city to capture the drainage at the intersection of Chico and Foster with the requirement of the Sage Apartments to have to provide drainage from First to Chico, that I don't agree, that we're, we're going down, we're setting a bad precedent if we do that. Because if we do it for this developer, then we ought to do it for every developer.
Thank you, Mark.
If you wanna sit down in the front row, just in case there's other questions.
Yeah, you might wanna sit there, 'cause you're gonna be up here again, probably. Counselor Carson?
Well...
And then Counselor V. Hill. Your question was answered, okay.
I, uh, I just wanna say that in reading the original SIA, um, you know, it wasn't met. I think that, from the city's standpoint, extending it a year is, is fair, and that's a, that's a good, good gesture. I did have the... I did have the same questions you had about the dates and you being able to meet those dates, that was my confusion, and that's why I asked for the clarity. So, you know, I feel that bumping it out to the 31st is pretty fair, and giving the additional year to meet the SIA, again, is pretty fair. I think that we should move forward with this, I mean, that's my opinion. The way it sits with the amendment to the, to giving you guys to the 31st of January, I just think that that's a good gesture on both parts. The original contract wasn't met, and that's the issue I have, and I think that if we go back as a council and, you know, change our mind on stuff that's been voted in in the past, we set a bad precedent as well. So, I think that, in my opinion, and I can't speak for everyone, but I believe that the way it's presented with the date of the January 31st is more than fair, and I agree, I understand your concerns, I don't agree with them, I understand them. But, I would say that that's a more than fair gesture that we're doing here, and we should probably move forward with that, so that they can move forward with their plan and get their costs figured out as well, because I understand that's a big concern. But I, that was my opinion, and that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Counselor Carson, appreciate it. Counselor Grego?
Yes, I had several questions here. When the city manager was doing her presentation of the history, it sounded like, do we have an agreement with the Jackson Ditch? Because that section there...
We do, it dates from the seventies, I think, it's a very old agreement.
So we do have an agreement, so that's what you were referring to, that whatever it costs?
The agreement will need, the agreement that we have in place with the Jackson Ditch that accepts stormwater will need to be amended if it's going to accept stormwater from this part of the city, because it does not extend that far west.
But there is an agreement out there.
Yeah, and the language refers to if there's an additional cost there, or if there's another mechanism of conveying the stormwater. So, if we're not able to negotiate putting more water there, we do have some other alternatives that we would look at for the stormwater.
Also, when this project was started, do we need any kind of permit to move ground, move dirt?
If you would want, I could have Mark describe what was in the ground, it wasn't just moving dirt by the time we were out there? Is that the question you are having?
Yeah, I understood that they were just moving dirt.
No, that would not be it.
I'm trying to think how to say this diplomatically, so give me a second here. The project had proceeded to the excavation of the foundations, and I'm not sure the steel was in place, but the placement of concrete was imminent, when it was spotted and we raised the flag that, hey, wait a second, you need a permit for this. And, so, I guess it was not just moving dirt, it was, the batterboards were up for the placement of the foundations.
Now that you're up to two, this third plan that was submitted, you've already looked at it and approved it, or?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The third plan that was submitted to you?
We're in review. I'm missing some key staff, so that there's a couple of pieces that I still need to review, that still needs to review. But I believe the plans are generally equivalent to the plans that were submitted in September that I signed and did the full review on, so I don't see where we couldn't get that approval relatively quickly.
But I would want to add that the timeline, as the applicants pointed out, is much too tight, they just physically can't meet that. So, we need to get our staff in place, we need to finish the review. We think it looks good, but we, you know, we need to finish the review, and that's why staff would recommend, you know, the January 31st timeframe as well.
And also, in this plan, does it, will it give the cost of the labor and the materials to do this drainage?
We don't normally require that of the plans, and this, the only reason the requirement for the cost estimate was, was to review the original letter of credit and see if that needed to be modified. So we don't review a subdividers or a developer's cost estimate to build, we review the plans to build.
So we don't have an idea what the materials and labor would cost for that drainage?
We don't review that. We don't approve it or disapprove it, there's no point to it. We require, you know, something that complies with the design criteria of the city. We don't require a cost estimate for something that is being installed by a developer. In this case, we are requiring the cost estimate of the total project to check the value of the existing letter of credit and see if it's sufficient to allow the project to move forward as is. Erica, if I could help me out here?
Sure.
And I, like Heather pointed out, I was back then on that council when we made this agreement and stuff. But I also agree, I am one too that not set precedents and so forth, but when you have a project like this in housing that is needed in the city of Alamosa, I, like Counselor Boyles, feel that we should help in some way to make sure that, you know, to help not only this developer. Right now, there's three big developers in my area, this is one, that's why Mr. Martinez said that he approached me, because it's in my district. And we have the other one, another big one that, in my feeling, was treated the same way they've been treating Mr. Martinez, was the Patterson Development there, where Monroe was never put in, a street was never put in access and stuff. And, what I want to, the point I'm trying to make is, we need to treat everybody across the board fair, you know? Al Gold right now, and that other, we're still questioning the street part, that as a developer, he should be paying for part of that street. Now, I guess it's turning out like, that the homeowners are gonna probably have to pay for that, for that street there on Foster. And then we got another developer that has put a bunch of duplexes in on Tremont there in that area, that, like I said, we need to treat everybody straight, everybody fair. So, and I don't want to create, I'm not here to argue with anybody or put anybody down or anything, but I think that we need to find a way how to work with any developer, and we have in the past. You know, so, I don't know how we would do it, but I think we need to work with him and find a way how to, you know, instead of putting more and more costs on top of other costs and go that direction.
Counselor, would you like me to clarify the information on those two developments and what we've required of those developers? So, for the Monroe, we do have an escrow, well, actually, it's a letter of credit, and it's an original fifty thousand for their half of the street, because they're only on one side of it, they don't own all of it. So we've got the fifty thousand as a letter of credit with the same language, that if it costs more than that for that portion, they would have to pay it, as well as the twenty-three thousand five hundred, when council amended that, for that additional access, so we have that as well. The trigger is if any other development occurs, even if it's not theirs, then the construction of that road will need to happen, and we would be pulling those letters of credits. In relationship to the duplexes, that is actually a bit of a different situation, we had to do a little bit of our history research on this one. When we're doing development agreements, it's either through the annexation or the subdivision agreement where we're requiring the developer to pay for their costs, and so, when you look at these other ones we've done, that's what we've done. The duplexes you're referring to, many of them were already platted in the county, and that's when we did an emergency annexation because of the water situation. And so, that annexation doesn't look like our normal annexations, and they were already platted. So, there was not the same subdivision agreement where we would be requiring some of those costs to pave the street if it's gonna be paved and all of that. Now, there is one tiny one where they did come through from, to do a little subdivision, and of that, since that was then something that's coming through the normal process, they have already paid us for the portion that would be their little portion of the half-street, for when that needs to develop. And so, while all the triggers aren't necessarily a hundred percent, the concept of development paying for itself does factor into those as well.
I appreciate that, but I still feel that, yeah, we should be able to work some way with, not only Mr. Martinez as developer, but these other developers, you know, do something to help them out in some ways to get this in, get this whole project going and finished.
Okay. Any further discussion, any further questions? Counsel? Counselor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Can you explain to me the eight thousand dollars that Mr. Martinez had to pay for the water assessment fee?
Yes, there was a error in the Public Works Department before I was in the chair, and those fees were not collected, and they actually totaled, with the development that is being going on now, it actually totaled sixteen thousand dollars, of which the determination was made that the statute of limitations to collect that money had passed on one of the units, so that assessment was reduced to twelve thousand dollars. And, in that it was never collected and should have been, we did assess that now.
It arose out of the annexation agreement for that property.
So, that's where I was getting at, that agreement was made in 2013?
No, that was prior.
Or when that stuff was annexed in?
That was prior, yeah, when it was annexed in, so I don't remember when, but long prior to 2013.
Okay, was Mr. Martinez the owner of the property being annexed into the city?
No, it was his predecessor.
But the annexation...
Leroy Martinez.
But Eric, can you explain how the annexation sets out who pays that assessment?
Right, so this is very similar to the issue that, well, I guess it hasn't come up yet, but your standard annexation agreements require that the annexer, the person bringing property into the city, make provision for water for that property, to serve that property, and the way that's typically dealt with is by assessing a fee for that water assessment. And typically, that fee is triggered by what you contemplate the annexed property being used for, and therefore, how much water it's going to need. And if you don't know at the time, the agreements build in triggers about when it is that you finally do know and have to pay that fee. And when Mark says, we made an error, there is improvement to be made in the way the city tracks when those triggers happen. That's certainly true, and that hasn't just happened with Mr. Martinez, it's happened with a number of entities.
Thank you for that clarification. And then, can you, I'm still hung up on this, on the Hickory Jackson Ditch. Why is that language, why, the water...
The language is not, the language is not, as Mr. Martinez referenced it, the language says, if the subsurface drainage is the way that is used for draining the street, then there may be a necessity to participate to the extent of your proportionate share in getting that subsurface drainage to work. So, and Mark could explain what's going on, but the detention pond that's required, or that is contemplated under this most recent site plan, is a ten-year detention pond, so it's much smaller than a two times a hundred-year detention pond. That will work in the interim while the city gets the way to get that subsurface water out of there, but as a permanent solution, it won't work, and so there has to be a way to get subsurface water out of there, which means the developer has to pay proportionate cost of that way once it's done, whether it's the Hickory Jackson Ditch, or whether it's another method of getting that out to the river.
So we're not cornering him, saying that the water from this, the water from these apartments has to go into that ditch at some time?
Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. And Counselor V. Hill, I was concerned about that, I reread that section of the SIA amendment several times, just to make sure that that was what I was understanding as well, so I really appreciate the language and how it was written. I agree with Counselor Carson about not setting a precedent in that this SIA, I was, I'm excited to think that we could probably grant this SIA amendment with the extension of the timeframes. I do not think it's council's role to get involved in the day-to-day, some of these things with the city staff and making those decisions, but I appreciate the extension of the SIA coming to us and having this conversation and hearing the perceptions. I think we can use this as a learning opportunity with the miscommunications that have happened, because I don't think those are okay, right? Like, I really think that that's something that we need to be very conscious of as city team members, and making sure that we are as clear, concise, and, you know, professional as possible at all times when we're dealing with our community. And so, I really appreciate hearing the multiple sides of tonight and sharing with us. And I did just want to comment on Counselor V. Hill's thing, that I read that several times to make sure I was understanding it correctly, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Grego?
So, in moving forward, we would, if there's a motion made out there that we would extend the dates for this deal, for the, I guess, the plans and so forth, and that, I guess, are we saying, see, I'm confused too, because Eric's saying that we don't need this one kind of drainage, but there needs to be put a sub-drainage, and I, so if we move forward, then he has to pay for a sub-drainage?
Per the original SIA, he needs to address stormwater, whether that was surface stormwater or subsurface, it needed to meet the city codes. And so, that's what the requirement was of the original SIA. So, what we brought before council tonight was to give the individual another year, plus then it had some of these dates, which clearly tonight we've identified, some of those dates do not make sense for them to get the estimate, extend the letter of credit, and those things. So that's what was brought to council tonight.
So, like I said, I, so the cost of the drainage is not even part of this agreement?
For a city, no.
No?
Again, the original SIA had the requirement that they would construct Foster Avenue and meet all the city code requirements, which was the construction specifications.
Okay, counsel? Counselor V. Hill?
Yeah, just, I guess, a final thought.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Daniel.
I met with Mr. Martinez twice in the fall, and had a couple phone conversations with He does, what do you say, he does recognize that he should have got the job done within the five years. I think that this also needs to get done, I think it should, I think we should extend to January 31st, like Mr. Carson had said. I do, though, however, really want the city to pursue the SID as fast as we can, because having a road of six hundred feet into dirt road, I think, won't be appealing to the eyes, it will hurt the quality of that road when people come dirt onto pavement, so I really want our city to get after it on the SID down there, so that doesn't take eight or nine years to get that going.
And Counselor, I know you've mentioned this in our monthly meeting as well, and I haven't had the chance to talk to Mark, but I think we set mid-February to report back to council on our outreach to the different property owners. If we get it done sooner, we'll obviously report back sooner than that, but I feel that's consistent as well with the message of taking the winter time to do that reach out, which is what we had talked about before as well.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't want to move forward too quickly if other people had comments.
but um I, if there are no other comments, I'm going to move that we approve the Amendment of Subdivision Improvement Agreement, Lot One, Block One, Sierra Vista Edition. Um and that we change the dates in that amendment to um everything that was dated December thirty first, twenty eighteen be changed to January thirty first, twenty nineteen.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Counsel Gregel.
Mayor, uh I'm still hung up on this cost of this drainage deal and uh and the fairness there. And I you've made it perfectly clear, right? But I, there's got to be a way that we can maybe work something out, you know. I don't know what that, if he says that it's going to cost an extra forty thousand dollars to do stuff like that, is that something?
Mark, if I, so Counselor, I, do you feel like you have an estimate? Or I mean, I'm not sure these are relevant questions for you.
Yeah. I have seen an estimate, but I'm I'm working off of memory and I'm unprepared to to say it definitively. But that seems reasonable to what I've seen from Mr. Reynolds. Um uh but if I can add one other thing, I need direction on when to apply that philosophy. So if if uh another developer comes in and wants us to help with the drainage, when do I apply that a philosophy?
So yeah, this is not the foxhole that we need to get down. So right now, counsel has set policy in regards to what they're requiring and not requiring. Um if you want to discuss something that's unique related to this, um we may need to repost it in regards to if it's been posted appropriately. But I don't want to open this bag of this whole precedence on how we're doing development for everything.
Sorry, I got sucked up.
Thank you.
That's all right, and I didn't want to put you in a position either, so thank you.
My apologies.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Counsel Brawls.
Yeah, uh after hearing both sides, I still, I think there's a lack of clarity from the city exactly what was expected uh over the over the over the timeframe. So I mean, I hope the city can make it more clear uh what's exactly expected by a developer, rather than saying, look at the code. I mean, I think uh I think this could have been averted if you if you clearly, you know, was more clear on the on the uh drainage of the water. That's my opinion.
Okay, Counsel Carson, did you have discussion?
No.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion, please start voting. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. All right, up next on the agenda is item B, a motion authorizing. Go ahead, Heather, if you can go ahead and if that's your area.
Okay, um the item before you is a motion authorizing the mayor to enter into a second golf course lease purchase agreement with San Luis Valley Federal Bank for the front nine irrigation replacement project. Um if you could just have a little bit of patience, I want to provide a little bit of history on this. The city purchased the golf course in nineteen sixty and since that time, the city has invested over two point six million dollars to include improvements in buildings, land and equipment. Now again, that is just the city investment um over the years and it does not include the membership fees and the golf board investments and and those types of things. These investments were made to enhance a facility that not only adds to the quality of life for residents, but it also serves as an attraction for new workforce. And this is a message that we definitely heard when we were doing the update to the comprehensive plan. We had a lot of our major employers in the room talking about the value that our trails and the golf course serve in attracting some of their professionals to the city of Alamosa. Unfortunately, the front nine irrigation system at the golf course is forty-five years old and it's fifteen years beyond its useful life. We believe that the numerous breaks um in the system and the distribution lines are causing issues with the new pump that was installed in twenty sixteen. And a catastrophic failure of the front nine system will occur soon. In twenty thirteen, the city contracted with Larry Rogers Design Group to evaluate the irrigation system and also take a look at the course design with an eye towards conservation from a water perspective. When that review was submitted, it clearly highlighted that the system is way beyond its life, but the design and the equipment itself is not efficient in that it requires a significant amount of time to just manage it, which pulls manual labor away from other operational needs at the golf course. This is not new to the golf board. They've been communicating this need to the city to replace the front nine for several years. Um but with a price tag just shy of eight hundred thousand, we were not sure how we would tackle this project. In two thousand eight, the city entered into two lease purchase agreements for the construction of the current clubhouse with San Luis Valley Federal Bank for a total of nine hundred thousand. One agreement has since been paid off. And then the remaining balance for the remaining agreement is three hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-two with a payoff date of twenty twenty-seven. We contacted San Luis Valley Federal Bank to see if it would be agreeable to refinancing the lease purchase agreement that would allow for us to replace the front nine irrigation system. The bank is agreeable to the issuance of a second lease purchase agreement and the different lease purchase amounts I'll get to here in a minute and we've detailed those below. The second agreement, this gets a little kind of technical on the fiscal side, but it's important to make sure it's clear. The second agreement would actually be subordinate to the first. Therefore, we could, there was no point to do a competitive process because another bank would not want to be subordinate to the original lease purchase. Additionally, the second lease purchase is limited to the remaining unencumbered collateral. So we cannot do the full eight hundred thousand. We would be limited up to five hundred thousand. So this is some new information from when we last had that work session and we were looking at some different amounts. The other part that's important to make clear is that the Recreation Fund and the Conservation Trust Fund cannot pay for this project. So when we do this, this will be coming from the General Fund. When we look at what the fiscal impact is, and we've worked with SLV Federal to to receive these, we looked at a ten-year lease purchase with a rate of four point two nine seven percent. And before I get into those, I want to back up a tiny bit. So the original one that was still existing, where we're paying an annual payment of fifty-three thousand, we're not touching that, we're not changing it. It's going to stay in existence, it's going to end when it needs to end, it's going to, we're not touching that one at all. So we will continue to pay that from the Conservation Trust and the golf board's going to continue to pay their twenty-four thousand five hundred and seventy. So none of that changes. So the information that's listed below then is for the second lease purchase. And what we did is we provided some different levels. If if counsel decided you wanted to finance three hundred thousand, we have what that annual payment would be, the total interest paid, we have four hundred and then we have five hundred. You can do variations within that. And then also, as we discussed in the work session, when we take a look at the um General Fund, we could pay the full eight hundred without financing it. Now, that will restrict, greatly restrict our ability to do other capital projects. After my meeting with the mayor, because when we wrote this council communication, the mayor had asked, well, what is staff's recommendation in regards to financing? And at that point, my understanding impression was our priority is we need to get the the project done. It might be more of a council prerogative how much interest you want to pay or not pay and how much general fund you want to use and not use. However, I have spoken with the finance director and she said if she's making a recommendation, she would probably recommend that we do finance the five hundred thousand. Um that would leave more funds available for other capital projects for the General Fund. Um but again, for us, it's more important that we do the project um and counsel can take a look at the additional interest that would be paid for those different amounts. And I do believe we've got some golf board members who have patiently been waiting.
Okay, um at this time, did we, did you want us to hear from the golf members or you want counsel to just go into discussion?
Did you have anything to to add? I think they're good.
Okay, all right, so counsel will go into discussion. Counsel, Counselor Carson, then Counselor Hensley, or did you have it?
Go ahead.
Okay, Counselor Hensley? And then Counselor Daniel?
One of the things too, correct me if I'm wrong, golf board, um I think the other thing is from a water situation. Because the water has been an issue for the golf course and continues, from what I understand, this is actually really going to help the water situation and the usage because of what they can do now with these types of systems. And there's a lot more controls um of what can be watered, what they can turn off certain areas, that type thing, am I right with what I'm kind of saying? Okay, so I think in that perspective also, besides this, this actually is going to save in the long run as well from a water perspective, which I think is going to be a great situation because obvious as, obviously as we've seen, especially the last couple of years of how dry it is, it's really affected and it's hindered their progress in trying to get more people to golf and all the things they're doing because of some of those challenges, which also costs a lot of money.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hensley, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Then Counsel Brawls.
Um so when we had our work session, we had talked about a couple of different options. Um one of them, I believe, at that time, we thought we could fully finance the eight hundred thousand. That was what we thought, okay. Uh that's okay, you don't have to say that out loud. She said yes, everybody, for the record. Um the this, and I was really concerned about fin- about financing a full eight hundred thousand. Um I can appreciate that um this needs to happen immediately. I much prefer only financing about half of it um and then using, would it be four hundred thousand out of the General Fund in one year? Would it, this all happen in the same year?
Yes, I, a majority of it, if not all of it. We clearly want to limit the disruption we're going to have to the course and and those types of things. And so we would want to try to do as much as possible, plus the system really is in bad shape.
Okay, um with that being the case, um I I feel more comfortable with the uh finance director's recommendation of five hundred thousand than I thought that I I would be. But I was absolutely not comfortable financing the full eight hundred thousand at all.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor uh Brawls and then Counselor Carson, then Counselor V Hill.
Uh are we going to take this out to bid? Are we going to get two, three bids on the system?
Yes, we will get a bid on it.
I I just think that eight hundred thousand is.
Absolutely.
A little high.
I think it's so.
I think it can be put in a little cheaper, but we're only, we're only talking about the front nine, right?
Yes, we're talking about the front nine. Um and it could be that 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 eight hundred might have included a little bit of the pump and some things like that, so we do feel. But we also know that when we look at what was put into those cost estimates, we want to make sure that the piping we're using is some of the newer kind that they have that doesn't have the same shelf life. We want something that has a much longer shelf life. So our goal is to get it much lower than eight hundred and we will be bidding it.
There's no prepayment penalty on the loan, right? If we borrow five hundred thousand, we want to pay it back next year, we could do that, right, without a penalty?
There is a lot of, yes, we can, there is no pre, there's no penalty, we can, we can prepay it.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Brawls, is that it? Any further, I got other questions, are you done? Okay, thank you. Counselor Carson and then Counselor V Hill.
Um, do you have questions, Counsel?
I do.
Go ahead.
Taking a hit out of our General Fund, is that going to hurt our CIP?
So we can still do the CIP um as you guys have planned out. How this is going to impact it is, if you remember Counselor Brawls during the budget session said, why are you applying your sales tax projections on the budget and not your actual numbers? So when we made that correction, which was a very appropriate correction to make, um for the next year, it made a difference of almost two hundred thousand, which then it would be another two hundred thousand the next year and then another two hundred. But it was so late in the process, we didn't want to completely reopen the CIP. So we did add the Washington subdivision um plan. Um but then there was going to be those funds for you to evaluate, to maybe put in a few more. You can't, you wouldn't be able to go to town, but you could put in a few more projects the next time in the CIP. So depending on what level you finance, we'll still allow some of that flexibility or not allow some of that flexibility.
I just don't want it, I don't, and the golf course, I think we need this, this is necessary, but I don't want our, not not at, not at taking away these street projects and stuff like that.
We would not be taking away anything that's in the CIP as it stands.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Carson?
Um I'm going to motion that we that we authorize the mayor to enter into a second lease purchase agreement uh financing the five hundred thousand dollars with San Luis Valley Federal Bank.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, up next on the agenda is we have the first reading of ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty eighteen. Are you, Eric?
That is, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I am pulling it up. So this ordinance is an amendment to um address sort of a relic of the way that we have been operating municipal court without really thinking about it. And that is, that is causing a fair amount of of effort on the part of staff and and minimal expense on the part of the city to issue um five dollar appearance checks with every subpoena that we issue for appearance in municipal court. And as the council communication states, it's kind of been ignored by everybody because the statute was initially enacted in nineteen sixty-seven, I think it was, to require these five dollar uh appearance checks and has not been adjusted since. Um so five dollars is kind of a laughable amount and and frankly, people don't even cash those checks. So uh the statute that requires those five dollar appearance checks can be uh overruled by action of a home rule city through ordinance and that's what this ordinance does. It just gets rid of uh making five dollar appearance checks be served with subpoenas. So we will just serve a subpoena to appear. You get served with such a subpoena and you appear.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
I just would like to add, from a staff perspective, the headache that goes into issuing these checks, canceling these checks, there's some, there's much more staff time that goes into this and and that's part of what's prompting this.
You know, uh the smiles and way to goes that I got from the finance department were just astounding.
All right, thank you. Counsel V Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number three dash thirty-three dash twenty eighteen on first reading and set up for a public hearing on January second or soon thereafter.
Okay, motion and a second, any further discussion? Please start voting. Okay, thank you, Ms. Holly.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Up next on the agenda is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Okay, not?
No.
No? Okay, good. Okay.
Sorry about that, Mayor. I I got a committee report uh on the Recreation Advisory Board uh meeting that we had. Uh there was uh, we talked about the Alamosa Rip Park funding, the ranch plan that was adopted, uh the facility improvements update on the multipurpose L LED GM lights. And all this, all these minutes are in there, so you can, if you want to read them, you can go ahead and read them. But I think one of, some of the important stuff to read is uh maybe the change of the hours and the up, I think it was the change of, trying to read all this real fast here. Probably the upcoming events, uh Christmas Light Parade, uh December twenty-second, the Rudolph Run, December twenty-second, Rio Freeo Ice Fest, uh January twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. So I just thought I'd bring those up real fast for you, Andy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Okay, uh Counselor Hensley?
Um just real quick, so we did have our golf board meeting yesterday. Um and one of the things is um Britt Jordan has just been hired and he's actually jumped in um and boy, he gave a phenomenal report yesterday and his energy and I just think we've got a lot of great things going forward. So I just thought I'd. and his energy and I just think we've got a lot of great things going forward, so I just thought I'd mention that, so, pretty exciting.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Hensley, okay, all right, um, up next is staff announcements.
So as Andy makes his way up, I will share a few things. We do have a farewell for Amy this Friday at eleven-thirty here at City Hall. Okay, Andy, I'll let you go, and then I do have some others.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, just a quick update on Councilor Grego's mention of the Alamosa Riparian Park. Two weeks ago, um, when you guys were meeting, I was up uh, in Denver, I was fortunate enough to attend the GOCO board meeting where the project funding was awarded. Uh, the project was the number one rated open space project in the state. And our partners, Western Rivers and Dieter Erdman, deserve most of the credit for that. Very, very exciting, um, it was the first time I was able to address the full GOCO board. So just as, as important as being there, to recognize that funding was letting them know what a difference the Colorado Lottery and GOCO is making in our community and our entire region. Um, they mentioned the buzz that's present in Alamosa around all the things we're doing, whether it be downtown or outdoor recreation or, or this project here. They were very, very impressed. And Dieter and I were both there and it was um, a really, it was just a really good experience to be up there. To remind you, it's two hundred acres, abuts the Oxbow Recreation Area, adds about a mile and a half of, of riverfront trail. Uh, the next step is for Heather, Eric, and I to meet with potential easement um, organizations and, and see how we can uh, formalize the low-impact recreation and conservation of the property. Thank you, I'll entertain any questions if you have.
Councilor Grego?
Can you give the amount of grant that you got? That's why I didn't want to take, take your thunder.
Six hundred and ninety-five thousand, um, and thank you for reminding me, uh, there are so many partners in this, that's one of the reasons it was, it was rated so highly, so it's important that we recognize them. Um, the Lor Foundation, the Gates Family Foundation, Alamosa County, El Pomer Foundation, Trincheria Blanca Foundation, SLV Federal Bank, and SLV Health all contributed to this project. So tremendous community, um, and I guess you could say foundation support, so, thank you.
Thank you too, Andy, and thank you for recognizing our community partners and stakeholders, I think that's very important and it's so good to see everyone working together as a team to make things like this happen in the valley, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to go fast before I start coughing. If you want to stay there too, in case there's any questions, um, you may have read in the paper that ASU held their Board of Trustees meeting um, last week in regards to, one of the items they had on their agenda was to discuss our request for them to um, give the property to the city for the, for trails. Unfortunately, I was not aware that that was on the agenda and, and did not attend. Um, it probably could have been helpful in order to address some questions in regards to what the existing easement is compared to what we would need from a future perspective. I am in communication with Dr. Lovell. I think what was clear with what's been shared with me thus far is that ASU did not feel as if they're in a position to just give the property to the city because of the perception that would set, even though there really is no value perspective because it's a levy and you can't develop on it. Um, but what's, what maybe was not made clear is the existing easement is just a maintenance easement, which means it does not allow public recreational use. And so if we're going to be investing in trails for those types of activities, we would definitely want to get that type of easement for that section. And so I'm not sure if that was clear because I also know during the same meeting, they were very, very supportive of the city's efforts for the trails and the partnerships across country and, and those types of things. And so my assumption is that that need for that type of easement um, may not have been clear. So as I communicate with Dr. Lovell, I'll keep council appraised of that situation. And so since that's a little bit of a trail, do you have any questions on that before Andy sits down or anything like that?
No, thank you, Heather.
Okay, um, I wanted to give a shout out to our Councilor Hensley. Um, she had two different student groups do presentations and it received newspaper coverage as well in regards to the VIP efforts for the logo, for the valleywide logo and the economic impact of ASU and TSJC on the, on the valley. And I think um, both student groups did an amazing job, they really researched the areas that they needed to research and they did a great presentation, they answered questions from those in attendance um, and really provide some strong direction on next steps for both of those initiatives. And so it was, it was great to hear and it was interesting, um, in regards to the logo, listening to their thoughts on what they thought of the valley and Alamosa and what drew them here. And they felt that having that logo with the story behind it actually would, confirmed our thoughts, would much more sell the Alamosa to people outside of the valley. Um, they didn't realize that there's the mountains and the trails and the, all the different things you can do in the valley when they were looking at Alamosa. And so that hit on the head what the whole point of that effort is, is to try to raise the whole valley up and, and make it to where these younger generations on the front range um, will find value in coming here. So I thought that was a very positive interaction. I wanted to share that Eric and I will be meeting with Cleve Simpson regarding that water presentation about potential exportation of water outside the valley. Depending on that conversation, we may be setting something up with council, um, either probably as a work session or something like that. So I wanted to make sure you're aware that we are having those conversations and, and will be probably bringing something before you guys from, for Mr. Simpson doing a presentation. Um, I did want to share um, with our relationship with the county, if there's any development that's occurring within a certain area, they are notifying us in case we want to weigh in on that. Um, what we wanted to do is a lot of it is so benign, we didn't feel it was worth putting on the council agenda, but at the same time, we didn't want to not make you aware of it as well. So if there is something controversial, we would schedule it on if you want us to weigh in or not. If it's the more benign, we thought under the staff update, we would just let you know. So they have received um, a request for a special use permit from the farm park to put in some greenhouses. Dan's reviewed this, he doesn't feel like we have any concerns or any issues with that, so, just from an FYI perspective. Um, and I do believe that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Any questions of Heather? Okay, if not, let's go on to our council comments. Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, I wanted to say the library staff did a great job tonight with their holiday party with the moose. It was very well organized and they had a little giveaway and the moose was fantastic. Um, and so it was really fun uh, to be there. I did want to thank Holly and her team for putting together the farewell for Jean Farish today, I thought that went very well. Um, so thank you for doing that. Then just a reminder that if you are going to come out and run in the Rudolph Run this Saturday, I'll be running out there and with my warm weather gear. And then I had, I've been hearing things and it's just been like hit and miss, and so I don't know if we need to follow up and Heather, you can tell me if, if we do or not. Um, but since we put in the uh, parking permit thing on the street at Adam State, I've heard more concerns coming up from just various members of the Adam State community that I didn't, I didn't feel like I had heard before now. Um, and so I don't know if there's a need for a check-in, um, and that might be something that we might need to talk about.
Well, I can provide a quick update.
Okay, great.
So um, I'm not sure exactly what you might be hearing, um, but I did meet with Ken Marquez and we talked about, um, have we looked at this, have we looked at that? Um, some of them, some of it we had and we talked about that. One of his questions was, could we allow parking on the other side? Um, Mark shared with me today that he's looked at it, it's too narrow to allow parking on both sides. I have not had an opportunity to let Ken know that yet, so um, that's still something, I need to close the communication loop on that. There is a unique situation in that they have um, an end, a, a, a family that lives there. Um, and so what we talked about is if they could move where they're allowing them to park closer and out of space, and then if we gave them one permit, that then that might be a reasonable compromise. And again, I have not been able to follow up because if we were going to allow parking on the other side, then we didn't need to do that. So some of this still needs follow-up with, with, with Ken Marquez and the individual that, that is living there. The other question he asked is when we were going to start enforcing it. What we had communicated to council and the residents is we had thought before February first, however, um, we can't paint in this cold weather and I do not want just to put the signs up and start enforcement because people might miss that and we don't want to be leaving a bad taste. So what we were going to do was wait until mid-April when we could paint, but after talking to Ken, he asked, well, if you're going to wait then, can you wait till after May eleventh? Because then the students are gone, we can start fresh and, and all of that, and I said, well, the neighbors will probably be a little more grumpy with me, but I do think that's reasonable. So we will be sending a letter to the residents that the paint, the signs, all of that's going to go up um, and, and that will be after May eleventh from an enforcement perspective. Ken had questions on what enforcement's going to look like, so I'm going to follow back up with him on that. Um, and then he had just kind of some other, some general questions that we're following up on.
That, that is a perfect update, I don't need anything further, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Any other, um,
Oh, can I, I'm sorry, it was a big one. We talked about us preparing some informational stuff that then they can just hand to students and they can hand to their staff and all of that. And it will predate when we start enforcement and all of that, so no one's going to be caught by surprise.
Okay, all right, no other council comments, um, I'll just make one comment to the city staff um, as well as to Ruth and city council, thank you all so very much for a successful year two thousand eighteen. Uh, this is our last meeting of the year and I can tell you that this year has been a huge success for the city of Alamosa thanks to all the efforts from all of you. I wish you and your families the best during the holiday season and I'm looking forward to everyone having a new prosperous and joy-filled uh, two thousand nineteen, thank you all.